Okay.
My buttons don't say anything. Is press the blue one?
Yeah, continue.
You're on.
All right, then I want to welcome everybody to our Board of Education meeting on April 20th, 2020, and I'm going to look for a motion to go into public session. Can I get a motion, please?
Christine.
Okay, Christine, and a second from Linda. All in favor? I, Jen?
Bill is unmuted.
Okay, there you go. All right, so we're officially in the meeting. So if everybody--
Hang on, I'm going to share my screen.
He's got a flag there.
Yeah, that would be good.
Share.
Share the agenda, probably.
That's nice, Xavier, you're kind of right in the middle, too. That really works out nicely.
I like it.
Oh, it's even blowing in the wind.
It really is.
Waving.
Are you ready, Jim?
Nope.
Sorry, X.
Only last 10 minutes, so no worries.
Even we can't say it that slow.
Don't challenge us. Whoa, okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Stay with me. Okay, now.
Now, all right, hold on. All right, so if everybody would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's give this a try, folks. Okay, is everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's better, I think. I think we did better. All right, um, okay, so, uh, you know, I'm unfortunately, obviously, we are in a terrible time, all kidding aside. This has been awful for many people and especially awful for those of us who have lost loved ones or friends who have been sick themselves and have struggled with this disease. So I think we'd all like to take a moment of silence just to remember those that we've lost to this terrible pandemic and to maybe think some good positive thoughts for those who are still recovering. Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated. Okay, that's going to take us to the Board of Education meeting minutes trans-- sorry, April 6, 2020. Can everybody hear me? By the way, Joanne, can you hear me well?
You can hear you.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes for April 6, 2020. Can I get a motion?
Linda.
And a second, I think I saw from Xavier. Okay, all in favor? I-- Thank you. And any opposed? Great, thank you. So that was unanimous. We're going to the federal single audit, so we are going to ask for a motion to approve accepted 2018-2019 federal single audit as attached and prepared by Cullen and Danowski. We all got that, and that's for the fiscal year ending 6/30/2019. Can I get a motion to approve?
Christine.
Christine, and a second.
Michelle.
Michelle. So I have Christine and a second from Michelle. All in favor?
This was reviewed by--
I'm sorry, Jim.
--committee electronically, just so you know. All came back and understand and are in favor of presenting it to the full board.
Great. All right, thank you very much. All, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? I-- Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Okay, finally, that brings us to the warrants. So Superintendent of Schools is asking the Board of Education to approve the attached warrants, which are certified for payment on March 25, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Tom.
Tom, thank you, and a second.
Linda.
From Linda. So I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? I-- Any opposed? Very good, thank you, everybody. That is going to take us down to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Despite the fact, obviously, that we're not actually meeting in school, I know that students are still doing some really terrific things. If there's anybody that wants to share anything, now would be a good time. Anyone? I'll give a little shout out. We have some fantastic community members who are just doing some really wonderful things, and I'd just like to say thank you to our website builders and all those wonderful stories that go up. I think I saw Jen Corillo as one of our, one of the audience members, and I saw Rosie's really wonderful cheerful chalk design that she had made the other day that got onto the website, and I saw some beautiful and very moving artwork by some, an older student, and it's just nice to still be highlighting the kids' work because although they're not in our buildings, I know they're still doing extraordinary things. Okay, Jim, I guess that brings us to you.
I have a couple of updates. I was reading, actually, I had a quick conversation this afternoon with James Graber, and we were talking about the fact that, you know, we're, we're meeting the challenge, but it's, it's now, because things are in a good place as far as what we're doing, it's leading to other questions about what's going to happen down the road, and I mentioned him that I read, I read an article this morning, and it had a theme recurring in it that just kept reminding to run the mile you're in right now. When you run a marathon, you focus on it mile by mile, and then before you know it, you're at the, you're at, you're at the end of the long haul. And that's kind of what we have to do here because many of the decisions that need to be made are not necessarily in our hands, and I know one of the first things that keeps coming up is about the length of the school year or when days are going to be made up, and that is a decision that's going to be determined via executive order. So we did work through spring break, and everybody has been terrific, and the work that's being done in the school district across the board, from, from teachers to support staff members, to administrators, to buildings and grounds, to clerical, to food service, everybody is chipping in, and it really is making a tremendous difference for the kids and families in Huntington. But there are certain things that we can't answer, and as soon as I have those answers, I will communicate them. One of the things that remains in the balance is the state of the 2021 budget, and that's going to start with the state budget, and if you haven't been following the governor yesterday, throughout, if the federal government doesn't help us, we're going to chop state aid, school aid in half. We, for the most part, knew that that was just a tactic to kind of bring people on board and help those that don't understand, better understand the serious nature of the fiscal difficulties that the state is facing right now, that the major challenges that we're going to, that we're going to face beyond next year. As a matter of fact, next year may be easier than the following year. But right now, unless we get a fourth stage of federal relief, we're going to have some very significant problems when it comes to the finalizing of the, of the budget for 2021. As of right now, we are planning, Kathy and I spoke this morning, and based on what the governor stated, we're, we're going to build in a 20% reduction in school aid. And for Huntington, that's a, that's a hit. For other districts, it's an even bigger hit. So, you know, we're not, we're not alone here, but it's not, this is, this is not something that anybody really wants to have to address, and we're going to try and do it in the most productive manner possible, and we're going to try and, and obviously preserve the strides that we've made instructionally over the years. So that is an important piece of this. We can address that further when we get to the dedicated items, so I won't go too far there. There have been a number of executive orders and a number of modifications or amendments to commissioner regulations. There have been documents put out, very detailed documents, question and answer type documents that, that show a little bit more in terms of how we are working to address course credits and diploma requirements, and, and the regulations have been modified to the point where they really do understand the challenges that students and families and staff members face at this point. They have their own families as well. So at this point, they're on Regents exams. I think we went through this at the last meeting, and it is really a matter of completing the coursework that will determine whether or not a student, if it's a Regents course, obtains that Regents credit. So it's very important, and I have pressed this to students and families, that they, they need to continue doing what they've been doing in order to succeed, to get to that, that final level that they'd like to be at by the end of the school year. All timelines have been revised. We were in the middle of next generation transitions, new standards. Those have been pushed back. There have been questions about grading and progress reports. There's actually an article in Newsday reporting on some of the thoughts that are out there. We did wait a little bit. We are looking at combining the third and fourth quarters and moving toward, not a numerical, but a pass foul type system, and we'll release some more information about that once we get to the point where it's finalized this week. There's still a lot of district sharing going on. The idea behind this is not to put students in a situation where there's one more level of stress that's added to what they're currently experiencing. Progress reports, we talked a little about that. We issue the third quarter progress reports, the fourth quarter progress reports would probably focus more on student participation in the online activities and the interactive sessions, et cetera. A little bit more conversation to be had there, and we've also been having some detailed conversations about how to address end-of-year events, particularly for the class of 2020, and I refuse to refer to that class as anything related to this virus. Every time I hear somebody do that, it, it drives me a little more crazy. But we are looking at possible options depending on whether or not we are back or not. So, class of 2020 members, you need to know that we're thinking about you, and we are, we are going to do the best we can for you and with you.
Jim?
Yeah?
Quick question. Is it possible that a graduation ceremony could just be deferred until the summertime at some point?
It, it can be, definitely. The one concern we have with that is we will lose kids who are--
Starting--
Going in different directions. So it might be a combination of things that allows us, maybe in tears, to, to grab everybody, but we'd like to get this group together as best we can. So we, we have spoken about that. That is our one concern, that we lose some, particularly the, the, or long-term summer. There've been questions about class placements for next year. We're still talking about the best way to, to address that, and I actually did some work today on the Jack Abrams Woodhull. We have all of the, the, basically, the initial wave of placements done. I just now need to review them with, this is grade four, with Diana and a couple of others, just to make sure that we're all on the same page there. So we have that in a place to be completed over the next, over the next week, two weeks, and then it's, it's end-of-year process is that school still goes on. So we, you know, we have a lot of people-- I, I think this is infinitely more challenging in some regards than if we were here, and I, I'll say, I've said it before, I'll say it again, people are working their tails off, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate how everybody, every employee in this district has stepped up and is doing what's needed to be done to the children of Huntington, and that includes the Board of Education as well. I thank you all for, for the support and for all that's been, all that's been done over the past couple of weeks.
All right, thank you very much, and we thank you, obviously, Jim. We know that you are working tirelessly with your team to try to keep us afloat and better even, and truthfully, as challenging as this has been, I think that this district has risen to the occasion. I'm incredibly proud of our community and the way that they're handling this whole thing. I think it's been really, you know, of sorts of pride despite the fact that it's a miserable time to be in. So, anyway, thank you, Jim, and thank you to your team, and to James, I know you're out there. Please let the staff and teachers all know how much we appreciate everything that they're doing. I know that it must be incredibly hard. Many of them have families at home as well, and I really appreciate everything that they're doing, and we all appreciate everything they're doing. And that will take us to our first public commentary section. So, basically-- Yeah, go, Jim.
I'm going to look for a hand raised here, as we did the last time.
Same rules as during the, when we have our regular meetings. You have three minutes. You know, we asked that you tell us your affiliation to the district, and, you know, no personnel names or student names. So, Jim, you're the one looking.
I'm scrolling up and down here. Oh, I see one. Got you.
Hello?
Yep, you're in.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thanks, Jen. You know, the teachers have, have been working really hard with this. It's been an incredibly trying experience for, for everybody, and I, I'm just amazed and overwhelmed by what everybody is doing to reach out to students, to, to get them involved, to make sure that they're doing okay, to make sure that first and foremost, they're safe and taken care of, and second, to try and get them to continue moving forward educationally as best we can in this. It's obviously not an ideal circumstance, but I, I do think the model we're using is, is working very well, and it's just been, I don't know, it's been, it's been an incredible experience throughout all of this, but it's, you know, we do appreciate your support and your thanks. So, thank you.
Well, you're a great team member, Jen. We really appreciate everything you're doing, James, obviously. Send our best, and, you know, our votes of confidence to all the staff members. I really, I'm, you know, I'm amazed at what they've done and the way that they've been able to keep connected to our kids.
And that's, that's, that's critical. It's not just the, the academics, it's also the connections that they're, they're keeping the kids upbeat, and they're, they're reaching out. If, if a child is not there, they're going to find them. The, the percentage of students that have not been participating routinely is almost zero at this point, and that's attributed to the hard work that, that the teachers and the administrators and everybody is chipping in here. Everybody is doing yeoman's work.
Yeah, the work they're doing now, but also not to prolong the conversation any longer than it has to be, but I think it's not just the work now, it's the work from all along because it's the relationships, and what you've always talked about, Jim, is building these relationships of trust and these connections with kids, and in a time like this where it would be really easy for kids to get lost in the shuffle, they're not because they've already connected to their teachers and their principals and their, you know, whoever it is in the school building that they feel that connection to. It, it's showing because the kids are showing up despite the fact that it would be really easy right now to just, like I said, you know, quietly disappear into the, you know, the background, so.
And it's, just to throw it out, it's, it's everybody also, and as I scroll through the names here, I see Mrs. Mars, and I see Mrs. Plant, and these are people who work in our schools who, who truly connect with the kids from top to bottom, and it's, it's, it's for them that these kids want to be here. So, all of you, thank you.
Yes, big, big thanks to everyone. All right, was there anybody else that wanted to have a chance at public commentary?
I'm scrolling.
There's always, it's obviously another section, you know, session, another chance to make a comment at the end of our meeting.
Okay, I think we're okay for now.
Okay. So, Jim, that's right to you then, because this is, you know, the items for discussion and action. It's not even really showing up there, is it?
No, it is not, and I don't know why.
It was, showed up on my board docs one, that agenda.
Same for me, but that was ours.
Yeah.
Hang on, technical difficulty here.
Nope. That's weird.
That is weird.
It's okay, though. We know what it is, and then you can just add it in later.
Strange, it was there.
I have it on mine, so it's there.
Yeah, it is. It was there earlier when I--
Do you have it on yours, Kathy?
I do.
Kathy, are you logged in?
I have a separate, I have two laptops going.
Right. So I'm looking at, you know, I see it--
Jim, maybe when you scroll down, like happened before, maybe when you scroll down, it, you know, you managed to delete it somehow.
I don't think--
I don't, I don't see it on mine, and I was looking at it earlier today and saw--
It's live. I have a second laptop, and it's there.
Okay. Oops, that's not--
Nope.
Yeah, it's, it's on there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Stay with me.
You're making my eyes swim.
Looking away.
I hate when you do this.
I don't know why it didn't, I know why.
There you go. There you go.
Whatever the reason, I marked it private. It's there now.
Okay, great.
Just refresh your screens, folks.
Yeah.
Yep, I got it.
I marked it private accidentally.
No, we were on--
So you're going to give us a budget update, are you? Whatever. I was going to say, what are you doing, man?
The particip-- Hang on a second. The participant screen was in my way. There we go. All right, so I mentioned most of this before. We're, we're, we're basically waiting on the end of the first measurement period to determine exactly what the carving up of school aid is going to look like. Right now, it stands at the same level as we have in, in the bank for this year. I don't think it's going to stay like that. The governor started with 50%. He pulled back to 20% this morning if there is no fourth stage of a federal relief package. With that said, one of the things that, that we discussed over the weekend was crafting communications to Senator Schumer and any other federal, local reps on the federal level because they've got to, they've got to take care of New York here. We've gotten hit harder than just about every other state, and if there are major cuts in the state budget, there's two places those cuts are going to take place, and neither one of them can handle it right now. And that's education and healthcare. It's, it's reprehensible that that's, that, that it could even go in either direction. I, I've attached the letter I sent to the senator. I sent it this morning. I know a number of you have done the same. I'm going to speak to Mrs. Kanzer tomorrow morning because I think it's, it's something that the PTA should get involved in as well. It is, it, it's critical that we, we take the next step here because we're, we're, we're in a, in a terrible place, and we're in a better place than most districts. So this is, this is, you know, could decimate education unless, unless something, somebody or something steps in to save here, so.
Shouldn't the, the head of education at the federal level be doing some kind of advocating for funds for the public schools in the country?
I mean, that's a whole nother conversation. I don't think that's going to start anytime soon.
Funny. I'm just saying.
You're funny, Ms. Huber.
She's just saying.
Saying. I'm just mentioning that it would be nice.
Haven't seen her at all.
She's in quarantine, hiding.
She's not really pulling the strings. It's, it's coming from elsewhere, and there's a lot of political bantering between state and federal, and, you know, it's, at the end of the day, the only, the only people who are going to get hurt are, are the children, and that's not acceptable. It's not okay.
Well, and that's why we can't just sit silently and why we have to all write letters and make noise because unfortunately, that's what gets action, is a lot of angry voices demanding, you know, that they do what they should do and take care of the kids and public school education.
That's correct. So at this point, we don't expect to have the next draft, a much markedly different draft of the budget available for the board to review until the end of this month or right at the beginning of next month, when that first, we talked about this the last meeting, when that first measurement period is over, and we know where state aid will stand at that point, at least after that, that first period, and we'll take it from there. Kathy, as I mentioned before, Kathy and I spoke, we are working on a budget that includes a 20% reduction to state aid as compared to the last, school aid as compared to the last draft that we showed the board in March, and we're talking about a, I'm going to say about a $4 million reduction.
Does it also impact, the expense-based aids are also impacted?
That's a bigger number than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah.
It's about $4 million.
Yep.
Now, there, there are, that, that's a piece of it. Remember, there are things that we're not spending on right now, so there is, there's a litany of things that we're going to be looking at to mitigate the problem, but at the end of the day, it's not something you can just throw money at and not feel the pain the following year. So we've got to do this in a calculated manner and very carefully, and we are prepared to do that.
Jim, where would you see the biggest impact in any reduction?
Probably, at this, when you're talking 4 million, it would be, it would be in the personnel in the staffing and benefits area because it's the only place where there's real money in a school district, and we have some plans. There are, and I, obviously, you have the motivation to keep people here, so we've got to do this in a manner that makes sense, and we're going to do the best we can to maintain. But that's, you know, again, this is not rubber bands and paper clips. It's not going to do it.
Fingers crossed for a fourth, you know, stimulus boost that includes money for public schools.
I imagine there will be something there. It's a matter of how--
There better be. We're not the only one in this position. I can't imagine they want to bankrupt public schools nationally. It doesn't seem like the kind of thing an American citizen would want to do.
No, and remember, we're, we're at 14, 15 million in total state aid out of $134 million budget for districts that rely a lot more on state aid.
Oh, yeah, they're going to get creamed if their whole budget is coming, if their, the majority of their budget is coming from their state aid, they're about to get killed.
Well, and we also have, we also have the benefit of being very fiscally prudent and responsible over the past couple of years where we do have, we do have reserves that we can utilize, and at this point, with money not being spent, we can appropriate additional funding. You just can't throw hordes of appropriated monies at this because the next year would be unmanageable. So we're, we're trying to balance this out in the most productive manner possible, and one way or another, we're going to find a way.
Yep.
Reduction there is, it will be parrot, like 5% the same percentage to each district, or would there, could there be like some crazy schedule they come up with?
There could be some crazy schedule they come up with because if it's the same percentage for certain districts, you know, we'd lose in this, in the single-digit millions, and there are others who are dozens of millions, so it's not--
Like their whole budget for, you know--
I mean, the, the least wealthy district on Long Island is 80% state aid funded.
Wow.
So, you know, we are--
Can you imagine how much money that must equal to in their budget?
I don't know the total--
20%? No, I'm just saying. I mean, I, I, I'm just guessing. It would be a large and scary number.
Can I ask a question? And forgive my ignorance if I should know the answer. So if this fourth stimulus package comes through, is it up to the governor to divvy it up, decide how much of it goes to public education, or does that come down from above to him?
No, usually what happens at the federal level, they, they will provide X number of dollars to, to each state. They determine how much a state gets, and it's at the governor's discretion as far--
Right.
How it's distributed, and it's not just schools. It's schools, it's healthcare, it's--
Innocities.
Right, so it's going ultimately will be up to the governor, so writing letters to him as well would--
Well, I think we got to start with, with the letters to the federal representatives because there's nothing--
But yes.
--to do with if this--
If the money doesn't come, right, but once--
But once it does, for sure. Let's remind them that the schools need it desperately.
Yeah, talk about a great equalizer, right?
Yeah.
And when we're focusing on the disparities with healthcare right now.
No doubt about it.
The letter is online. It'll be posted. It'll remain posted in board docs for anybody who wishes to take any language that I've used here. It is something you can send. He has a dedicated platform through which any emails can be sent. It's not an email address itself, but it's right through his website, and it does acknowledge that it's been received. So I'm sure he's getting bombarded with them as we speak.
So you didn't send a paper copy. You just sent it right through the email?
I did, I did put it--
Oh, you did both?
Yeah.
I'll do that, too.
You probably won't get that one, obviously, for another couple of days.
No, but I'll do it also. It seems like a good plan.
Hey, Jim, I just got a text message from somebody that's on the chat here with us. They're wondering what will happen if locals can't meet the tax burdens or the tax responsibilities. We would lose somebody there as well.
That's, that's not, you know, unfortunately, that's a more of a town issue than a, it's a town and county issue more than a school district issue.
I saw that the town did put in a request for a waiver on paying on time--
Until August.
--your decision. Something, they had to ask the state, I guess, so they're waiting for that, I think, waiver to tell them.
Yeah, and those, those, those requests are going to the county. We've already had communications as a superintendent's association with the county about delaying, about an overall delay of property tax payments, and, you know, that, that delay can only go so far without coming in and, and either additional borrowing on the part of schools or somebody coming in to, to bail out because the school payments have to be made.
Actually, I had a question that was later in the agenda, but I guess it goes now as well. The TANs are on the agenda later, right? And I was just wondering, is that the same amount that we always ask for approval for? Or are we anticipating needing?
Well, we don't, we can't anticipate anything at this point because we don't know. So at this point, the timeline, we've gotta, we've gotta get those TANs approved. And if something changes, we'd have to go back at it.
Right, I'm saying that's our normal dollar amount, what's the 25 million?
Yeah, we typically ask the board to allow us to do the 25, but we've been coming in at 18. You know, we, for what we really need. So now, you know, if we have to go, but that's for next year. It doesn't help us this year.
Right, no. And then my other question was, the only date still that's been set is this June 1st, just holding date? There's no dates for when you need to submit anything on budgets or anything like that?
No, the timeline for everything else will be determined once the budget vote date is set. So everything hinges on that. So once the vote date is set, you back up a couple of weeks to the hearing, to the adoption, then the hearing, et cetera. I've heard June 9th thrown out several times. I know that there has been a push on the part of some districts to allow the board to vote on tax cap or less than tax cap budget. My opinion is, I don't think it's a time to take things out of the voter's hands, despite the challenges that they may be faced. In fact, it may be even more important for them to have their say at this point. Despite the fact that that may be convenient for one year, it certainly doesn't lead to goodwill moving forward. And I understand why people, it's a matter of, you know, how do we do this if people can't get to the polls? I understand that as well. The other thing that's come up quite often is absentee ballots. And we did, we did kinda get ahead of this. And we've got quite the volume of envelopes and ballots on order should we need them.
Thank you, Joanne.
Yes.
Joanne is right on top of that stuff. Thank you so much, Joanne. Um, you know, I think our community trusts us greatly and knows that we've always tried to be fiscally conservative, as you said, and responsible. And so I do think that if push came to shove and it was up to us to vote, that we would have, you know, mostly support from the community. And yet, I agree with you, Jim. I don't wanna do it. I think that it's a terrible time to take the vote out of the voter's hands. And yet, if it becomes an issue of, you know, a health safety issue, we may, you know, we may have to reconsider it.
Well, there has been no response suggesting that they would even permit the board to take the role of, I mean, that's been the argument, that the board is elected by the constituents, the school district, and they represent. But there has been no real positive governmental feedback on allowing that to happen. And I can't say that I blame them either.
I know, like I said, I understand the rationale behind it. But these are strange and unique times. I guess I'd just say that.
Was that suggestion meant for capital propositions as well?
This was about the budget vote. Because the budget would include, it would include any other propositions that were on the ballot.
Very good.
But actually, in terms of the board voting on that, that really wasn't the focus. But if you have two propositions on a ballot, it would make sense for both to be treated in the same manner. That's a lot to ask the board to do when they're representing, when seven people are representing 27,000. It's not. I've been very vocal against it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, let me ask you one more question. We have meetings that are scheduled in, basically timed with when our budget vote would have been. Are we going to meet for those meetings anyway? Or are you just gonna push those off? Because one of them, like you said, was the, you know, the budget.
That's an excellent question. And we'd probably have to establish meetings that are not on the calendar with the appropriate lead time in terms of posting. And we can leave the others there if there's, if there's business that needs to, that needs to be done, as long as you guys don't mind. But at this point, if they set a date of June 9th, then there's gonna be a window of time before which you've gotta have the adoption take place and the hearing. And there's gonna have to be a presentation of what actually you'd be, you'd be adopting. So.
Right, of course.
You'd have to change, the dates that we set, those beautiful blue postcards are as good as the stock that they're printed on right now. And.
Seems like a lifetime ago.
Everything seems like.
It does. You know what I was thinking in my final year on the board? What I really want was some additional board meetings. Because I really feel like, you know, if I'm really gonna finish out this year, I might as well just really finish big.
My command.
Bring it.
Drag it out, Jim.
All right, thank you, Jim. Did anybody else have any other additional questions or comments about the budget presentation or any of the things that Jim just covered?
My guess is we'd have to establish, I'm looking at my calendar here, sometime during the first week of May, a meeting to review the next budget draft. We may be able to hold off until the next scheduled meeting, which is May 11th. But if we can't, I will consult with the group of you and we can, we can add a meeting or move a meeting.
Yeah.
That's the other thing we can do is take the 11th and just move it up a little bit.
Okay. I'm sure everybody's mostly flexible. I don't imagine anybody's going away anywhere, so. All right.
Michelle has big plans.
Michelle should have big plans. She should come over here and cook for me.
I said, once this is over, I'm cooking a big meal for everybody.
Good, we're gonna hold you to that.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much, Jim, for the presentation. That brings us to Ms. McCoy.
Hi, everyone. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
Okay, everybody, we got that. So I am looking for a motion to approve curriculum and instruction. Christine, and a second. I think I heard Bill, was that you, Bill? Thank you, that was a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much.
All right, Jen, before we get to the next group of items, well, the next item is different. The items that follow that, understand that we're, these are things that we, under normal circumstances, I would have had in front of you weeks ago. But in an effort to leave our options open for doing the things that we had planned on doing, those items are in front of you this evening. So there's no commitment to funding everything in whole or in part. But if we don't put these items in front of you at this point, we're not gonna have our options open. And these are options that we've discussed for a long period of time leading up to now.
Very good, thank you.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools of education approve the attached participation rate improvement plans for Jay Taylor Finley Middle School and Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School.
Very good, all right. Can I get a motion to approve? Michelle, and I think I had a second from Tom. That's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, wait, sorry, did somebody have a question or a comment?
No, that was me going to explain why we're doing this, but I don't really want to. Of all the things that we have to focus on right now, they actually extended the date of submission of this. And this is primarily a Long Island school issue to July 31st. But to be honest with you, we had them done. There's no reason we can't just get them out of the way and submit it. The only one that has to be submitted to the state is for Finley because they fell into a lower quartile just because of the volume of exam refusals there. It is what it is.
This year, we'll have 100% participation for all the assessments that are being offered.
Really, and we should pat ourselves on the back for that because, I mean, that is quite an accomplishment.
I don't, I don't know if zero over zero actually.
That's glass half full right there, Jim. That's a great attitude.
We'll go with that.
Let's go with it.
Well, then the value of gasoline.
Both undefined at this point.
I'm going to say, every single student who is required to take a state assessment this year is going to take it.
No, no, zero refusals. We have no refusals.
That's a better way to put it.
All those things. All right, folks, we had a motion and a second already. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve offering college course credit through SUNY Farmingdale for successful completion of the virtual enterprise course at Huntington High School.
Love this course. All right, we got that. Can we get a motion to approve, please?
Linda.
I have Christine and a second from Linda. Any comments or questions?
Just so you know, this was, if you looked at this yesterday, it said, beginning in the 2021 school year. Beth sent me something this morning that said we may have the option to offer it this year. So why not?
Oh, because it's the college, okay, that's great.
That's good.
All right, perfect. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great.
On recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve adoption of Big Java Early Objects 7th Edition, published by Wiley for the new Advanced Placement Computer Science A course.
Okay, very good. Before we get a motion and a second, Christine, did you have something to say that you need to circle back?
I just wanted to ask a question about the virtual enterprise. Do we know the cost to the students for the credit?
Actually, it's funny because Beth and I had a lengthy conversation about this because I wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be cost prohibitive for anyone. I believe it's $75 a credit and they have reduced rate of $25 a credit for those in financial need.
It's 50, it's 50 and 25.
50 and 25.
Oh, 50 and 25.
Three, three-credit course?
Correct.
You can, you can either get up to three or six credits, students.
So it's per semester, three?
It's three per semester.
Okay.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, so Beth, Ms. McCoy has brought the request for the Big Java Early Objects. And I, I'm looking for a motion.
Bill.
Bill, and a second from Linda. Any comments or questions about this one?
Yeah, this money already set aside for these textbooks, right? So it's, yeah. This is last year, yeah.
The proposals for the courses came about last year. The money, this year, we usually spend it in the spring because we let it go through the vetting process of looking at various books that would be a focus of the course. Then it goes through the subject matter council and the EPC. So usually, this is when we actually spend the money.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second already, right? Kind of lost track, I think we did. Okay, so all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good, thank you.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve adoption of the Cultural Landscape, 13th Edition, published by Pearson for the Advanced Placement Human Geography Course.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve? Xavier, and I think I got a second from Christine. Do we have any comments or questions for this one? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Couple more here.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve adoption of Principles of Economics 3rd Edition, published by W.W. Norton and Co. for the Advanced Placement Macro, Macroeconomics and Microeconomics courses.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve this?
Linda.
Okay, I think I got Linda and then I had Tom. Do we have any comments or questions for this one?
I have just another curiosity question.
Yeah.
Are we purchasing hard copies and access, online access for these books?
Yes, they do come with, the versions that we purchased do come with online. The last two, the one prior to this one is no longer in print. So when we do need additional copies, we had to upgrade to the newer version. The textbook that we're currently using for this course is from 2002. So it was really time to, as part of our five-year curriculum plan, to review and move forward with a more updated book. But yes, we do get the online version as well.
Okay.
That's great. 20 years old is probably enough, old enough.
None of it, go ahead, Bill.
Full year course, 70 books. We looking at two, three sections a year? It just, the number of books seems larger. Are we, how many sections we looking at running?
We talked about macro and micro, and there are combined courses that infuse two. There are some that involve, there are some where the economics course is embedded within the, within another course. So it covers all students who would be taking either macro or microeconomics.
Okay, so it's really like two courses.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I just noticed for all of these things that the concept of textbook was taken out, it's resources. So there may be a print text included, but in this day and age, just about everything includes at least a good chunk of online resource.
And a lot of the time, the hard copy is kept in class. So it's used as a class set, as a resource in the class. But not everyone takes a hard copy home because they have the online access for use at home.
That's great.
That online access expires, right? What is it, good for 10 years?
Usually a six-year license.
Six-year, okay.
Any additional questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed, approved.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve adoption of Understanding Psychology 14th Edition, published by McGraw-Hill for the psychology elective course at Huntington High School.
Excellent, all right. I need a motion to approve this psychology textbook. Okay, I have Michelle and then a second from Xavier. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and finally?
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve adoption of STEM Scopes New York 3D, K-12 science for use at the middle school level.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Linda.
Linda, and a second?
Michelle.
Second from Michelle. I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good, thank you very much, Beth.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Polanski, that brings us to personnel, a very short personnel schedule.
Yes, very quickly, asking for approval of personnel items on schedules eight and 16.
Can I get a motion to approve the personnel items? I'm sorry, Christine, and then can I get a second?
Linda.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, very good. And I think Dr. Acker, that brings us to you.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through O on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, and we have those all right in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve the business items, please? Tom, and a second from Christine. Do we have any questions or comments about the business items? Okay, great.
The business Zoom program, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's actually, it's a, it's an MOA with Erie, two BOCs, a couple of upstate counties with long names that begin with C that allow us to opt in through them to the higher-end Zoom platform. And we do believe that this also covers education law 2D compliance. We will verify that 100% before we send this up there. But this is what we've been waiting for to, we've been using it. But this covers us in ways that schools have not yet been covered.
Very good.
All right.
At this point, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the business items? All right, then, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and Christine, I think we have one donation tonight.
We would like to thank Mr. Joseph West for the donation of $1,000 for a scholarship in the Joseph Michael West Scholarship Fund.
Thank you very much to Mr. West. Much appreciated. All right, you're making my eyes so dizzy again. Brings us back to the second public commentary. If there's anybody out there that would like to have a chance to say something or make a comment, this now is your time.
And again, I'm scrolling, scrolling through, looking for the raised hand with a Karen Fisher thumb.
All right, then, okay, do we have any closing remarks by board members? Okay, then, I just want to thank everybody that joined us tonight. Thank you very much, everyone out there. Stay well, stay home, stay healthy. Stay well, stay home, stay healthy. And, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, 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 sorry.